Item number four on the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agendas presented, please?
Come in.
Back in.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? And Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number five is hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides this as a convenient opportunity for public comment before any official action is taken. If you would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three to five minutes. If you're a student and you want to address the board, you just need to give your name and address.
My name.
Just, I'm sorry. Right, just your name. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
The board will listen to all who speak, but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Any matters requiring follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Young, and I am the forty-second, the State Representative Forty-Second House District. I wanted to come in and introduce myself and address the board and introduce myself to you as well and answer any questions you might have to me of anything that's happening in Columbus. You're going to have a statement here, I guess, Ms. Sparks. And so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those at some time. I don't have any.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marcus Bailey. I'm with the Village of Elks, also a parent, seven-seven-two-three Essington Circle of three children in Centerville School District, so proud to be here. I'd just like to read a letter that was submitted to the Board of Education from the village. The Village of Elks, a parent organization, was pleased to partner with the district's diversity, equity, and inclusion team to share stories of African-American historical and contemporary figures who have made an impact on this community, the nation, and the world. In all, under the direction of myself, twelve videos were produced, edited, and shared with the district. Countless volunteer hours were invested, and the collaborative result was professional educational resources that could be used for Black History Month and beyond. We are delighted to see that these videos now have a home on the Centerville City School District YouTube channel and will widely be accessible. This is, was indeed a celebration of our diversity as a community and country, yet we know that a wealth of other resources are available to those educators who desire to include diverse voices in their classes. We are aware that there are some teachers who are endeavoring to be inclusive in their curricular offerings. One ELA teacher at the high school had the students analyze a Langston Hughes poem. A PBN first-grade teacher had her students do bios and a timeline highlighting Black History, and there's some other examples. We call upon the Centerville Board of Education to encourage, if not implore, the full inclusion of voices of color in the breadth of education throughout our district, not just in February or in a few classrooms, but on a consistent and comprehensive basis. Black History is not just a month. It does not begin with slavery, nor does it end with civil rights movement. The district must seek to include the too often hidden figures and silenced voices of people of African descent and their contributions in the areas of history, English, science, math, and music. That must be consistently incorporated in the K-12 curriculum. The district has stated its mission is to provide diverse educational opportunities that develop the skills needed to reach individual potential and create a foundation for lifelong learning. Therefore, I'm kind of skipping ahead for the respective time. Therefore, we are calling for the diversification of the Centerville City School District's K-through-12 curriculum with the addition of a curriculum diversity committee that will be part of the strategic planning process. This committee should be a diverse group, including representatives from DEI team, staff and community members, parents, and particularly those of African descent as a part of the strategic planning process. We recognize the strides that the district has made in adopting the DEI plan as a positive step forward. We appreciate that work that the DEI team is doing to help ensure diverse and equitable education for our students, and we are just asking the district to be intentional in their endorsement of the diversification of the K-12 curriculum to consistently incorporate the voices of people of African descent and their contributions in the area of history, English, science, math, and music. I'll wrap up there. We appreciate what the board is doing and has done. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? Can you see no one? We will go to item six on the agenda tonight, the board and administrative reports. Dr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Before we start with our reports tonight, just wanted to state a couple of comments publicly. Hopefully, everybody is aware that Centerville Schools did a very, very exciting weekend this past weekend. The Centerville High School Boys Basketball Team was victorious this weekend and won a state championship in the basketball Division One tournament. So it was a very, very exciting weekend. They played in the semifinals against Mentor and played a very strong defensive game and held Mentor to the lowest points I think that they had scored all year and were victorious there. And then in the finals last night at eight-thirty tip-off, they played Westerville Central and came down to the wire to the last several seconds and were victorious by one point, forty-three to forty-two. So quite an amazing accomplishment by our team, a lot of hard work and dedication by our coaches, and obviously a lot of hard work by our athletes and the team. So we will intend to have them to a future board meeting so that we can honor them like we like to when our students accomplish these great feats. So again, just a really, really exciting weekend. Everybody in Centerville is excited today, and it's just been a kind of a fun day to be in Elk. So we congratulate them publicly, and we'll have them again to one of our future board meetings and celebrate with them. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to just acknowledge the great victory that they had this weekend. So thank you.
Item six-A on the agenda, the legislative report. Mrs. Sparks, please.
Thank you. I think there's Mr. Young in the room, though. I found out today, this afternoon, since my report's just a day outdated, that the House Bill sixty-seven was signed by Governor Mike DeWine. This bill will make the following changes for the 2020-2021 school year. Exempt schools from the requirement to administer the American History and, of course, exam. Dr. Henderson told me though that in Centerville, we do this junior year and sophomore year, so we will continue to do this as scheduled, but in other districts, they're exempt from it. It will provide flexibility on the administrative of the state assessments by lengthening the testing windows, extends the use of final course grades in lieu of end-of-the-course exams for juniors and seniors, provides local flexibility to grant a high school diploma to any student on track to graduate and for whom the principal, in consultation with teachers and counselors, determines successful completion of high school curriculum or an individualized education program. Permits a student to qualify for a high school diploma by those successful completing the curriculum requirements and earning the Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal, requires the Ohio Department of Education to seek a federal waiver for accountability requirements, and includes an emergency clause. The House also passed House Bill one-thirty-three by a vote of ninety-seven to zero. The bill would provide a reduced property valuation for tax years 2020, 2021, and 2022 for eligible individuals as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, among other changes. The bill was amended and committed to ensure that valuation of the mileage stay in alignment to protect school districts from losing local levy dollars. The bill now heads to the Senate for consideration. And then the Senate Finance Committee held a sponsored testimony on Senate Bill sixty-seven, which would establish a committee to study the progress and challenges of African-American in Ohio regarding education, among other policy areas. And that is the end of my report for tonight.
Thank you. Item six-B, the student board reps, ladies.
So this past week, we've sent out a survey via Google Form to all the high school students regarding, it's basically just our pending comments survey that we would normally send out via a paper form, but because of COVID, we didn't have people signing and coming up close to us. So this survey went out to all advisories, and currently we have around six hundred responses. And we asked students to rank how big of a concern they see in various areas such as school safety, classroom, getting involved, access to honors classes, and several more. We also allowed students to comment on whatever they would like to, and use that as additional concerns in the district. And the three biggest ones that we've found so far, the survey is not completed yet, but include mental health, communication within the high school, and school safety. We'll have a full summary for you all next.
So this Tuesday, Zoe, Mrs. Sparks, and I met with Mrs. Stone in the Nutrition Department to talk about a possible program to create a gift account that would allow students' lunch debt to be paid off from donations from students and parents, either by parents at home at the beginning of the year or whenever they want to install money into the account, or by students when they round up their three-dollar-twenty-five-dollar lunch meals, so three-fifty, three-seventy-five, four dollars, whatever they feel comfortable donating. And I'm going to be sending emails out to the marketing block in the high school to get students to know that they have this option to round up their meals in the year that this is implemented. You don't currently make the program because for this year and through September of next year, all students in Centerville are guaranteed a free lunch by the school. And then I will be emailing our local representatives, including Representative Young and Representative Preach and Senator Montani, to address a current law that doesn't allow students to have school lunches at home, to bring some awareness to that.
Thank you, ladies.
Tom, can I ask you just a follow-up on this one? Do we have a significant problem with, you know, money that's owed because the students can't afford it? I thought that was not an issue, and you typically handle that. Is that how it?
This started with, I'm trying to remember my voice. This started with school lunches being thrown out, and so we wanted to make it available to students to take home, but under law, you can't do that. You can't sell school lunches and take them off the premises, or give them away, I'm sorry, but you can buy them. And so that's where this roundup change can go. So any kid who'd like to have a meal to take home can use the rounding up system and pay for a school lunch to take at home. Someone came, I believe, last year and talked about it. They were doing it in Indiana, but then they had to close it down because of this law. So the girls are hoping to write our representatives to get that changed. Welcome. Thank you.
Anything else on that? Item six-C, a homeless public notice through the services, Tammy?
Good evening. So tonight, we're just going to do a little talking about homeless. As we know, we do have homeless students that are, that attend school here in Centerville. We are, we look at shelter, if they live in shelter or transitional housing, if they live in an unsheltered spot, doubled up, so, you know, two families or more living in one household at the same time, a hotel or motel, and then unaccompanied youth. We don't usually have any unaccompanied youth, but from time to time, we do get unaccompanied youth. So in looking at it, you can see our data remains pretty consistent from year to year. So going back in 2019, we had thirty-six. Last year, we had thirty-three, and this year, we have thirty-one, which I would say any homeless is too many homeless, but, you know, our numbers are not significant. We do provide a lot of services for our homeless, so we make sure that they get transportation if they need any additional food or anything like that. We work with them to tell them where they can get those things and receive the support that they need. And if anyone knows of a family that is struggling, you would need to either contact me, Team Regurb, and I put my email out there, or you can contact Tom Passamond and let us know, and then we will help the families through with the, any questions tonight?
Tammy, are those the numbers, students or families?
Those are students. Those are individual students.
How many families?
I did not look at it by family.
Because it could have multiple children in the same family.
Yeah, if I, most had at least two children.
Okay, do we check for food insecurity also if one's got population?
We do, yes.
And how do you do that?
Well, we rely on our building principals, you know, to let us know. The teachers, a lot of times, it comes to the teachers, you know, from their students, and then it comes into us. Or it goes to Nutrition for Mrs. Stone.
I mean, do we tend to do like surveys or questionnaires or anything more direct or?
At this point, we have not done surveys more direct. I will say that our families are pretty good at letting us know if they have a need, you know, and for our teachers, even if a child or a parent pegged mentions it, they take it definitely to their building principal, and we follow up on it.
And I think if I could just tag on, I would agree with Tammy. Our counselors especially, and our classroom teachers that have built the relationships with families many times are the ones that they get this information, and then like Tammy said, they do bring it forth, and then we do everything we can to support them in any way that we need to. So I know when the COVID first hit back in the spring, we had families that were living in different places and actually, as we were delivering food back then, actually, several police and Washington Township Sheriff's Office also took it upon themselves to help deliver food as well, as some of the homeless families do, because they were out of the area. So that's just an example of, we'll do whatever it takes to make sure. Educational materials, Wi-Fi hotspots, devices, all of those things were provided during the school year as well.
Dale, what are we doing with the excess of food now that we can't give it away? Is it being drawn away? Yeah?
No, I mean, John, do you, do you?
I mean, it's, as you know, all the meals are free right at the SDA, so we're trying to give it out as much as we can. We provide opportunities for kids to get the breakfast, and sometimes kids will take it, sometimes they won't. Some of the rooms, some of our areas, we have additional funds of food that's available who's still, if they need it.
We have some other programs that our guidance counselors work with to make sure that families that even also are getting food over the weekend, so they get to take that food home with them because that's provided, it's donated to us. So that's provided, and they take it home with them.
It's a food deal program. Remember, we got it set up, that it was going to go through the summer last year, and I talked to them, and it looks like it's going to be happening this summer again as well. That's exciting.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, sorry. All right. Just a quick comment. My name's Wendy Williams, I'm a parent, and I'm also with the Village of Elks, but I had no idea about the homeless concern area. I am recently trying to start a residential housing and a homeless shelter, and knowing this, I would like to partner with you and get some information about what's going on, but I'm still in the, I'm still trying to find the house, the commercial building to even do this from, because this is just something new that I'm starting, so I think it was just a coincidence for me of being this willing to hear this, but my kid's been in Centerville all this time, so I would like to help out in any way I can.
I'll give you my card, put on the dot. Okay. And then we can touch base.
Thank you. Thanks, Dana.
You're welcome.
Any other comments on that? Item six-D, treasurer's report, Mrs. Oliver?
Yes, good evening. Just a quick update this evening, just a follow-up from our work session last week. We talked a little bit about the, uh-huh, we talked a little bit about our tax collections for this tax period, being a little bit behind or slowed down or delayed, and I believe, Mrs. Sternbach, as you asked me, have you received money in March to compensate for that, and we have. So we've received about twenty million dollars in March, which catches us up to where I believe we should be this time of year. And so I hope at the April board meeting, that's one of the updates that I will give you, is what our final tax settlement is. Mr. Dahl asked me if I would just address, just quickly, item seven-B that's on your agenda tonight, which is a resolution to accept amounts in rates through the county auditor's office. This is a routine item that we do every year. It's documentation that the county auditor requires that we do. It also keeps us compliant with our own audit. These are dollar amounts in terms of taxes, the designated use, meaning are they general fund revenue, is it bond millage, or is it permanent improvement money? And these are voted rates. These aren't effective rates. These are the voted rates that go along with that. So again, this is information that's supplied to us from the auditor's office that we're required to approve every year. And so again, just to let you know, I'll have a more robust update for you next month because we'll be talking about the five-year court pass a little bit, the revision due in May, and I'll, and we'll talk taxes and the tax settlement at that time. Thank you.
Laura, could you explain, since you mentioned it, the difference between voted and effective?
Sure. So the voted rate is what goes on the ballot in terms of, the most recent levy was five-point-nine mil for operating with one mil permanent improvement. Every year, as our valuation increases, the effective rate gets reduced and decreases a little bit so that we continue to collect about the same amount of money from one year to the next. And so as property value grows year after year after year, or every three years through our updates, then those effective rates continue to get rolled back over time.
Do you want to have a more detailed report next month?
Yes, I'll give a comparison to that next month.
I think that's one of the general misconceptions, is when people see their property values go up, they think their taxes are going to go up. And usually, when the taxes go up, it's because some other village came on their taxes. There's not more money going to the schools because their property values went up. So that's sort of what that effect is, is they're probably paying a little less to the schools than they were before.
Possibly, yes.
Anything else for Laura?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move to the action items on the agenda. It may appear like we're going through these fast, but we have discussed them at previous meetings, so let everybody know that. Item seven-A, treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the February 2021 financial statements, including the monthly general fund rolling report, the monthly general fund breakdown, the monthly cash reconciliation, the monthly fund activity report, then-and-now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution, owing fifty-two thousand forty-one dollars and twelve cents. Number six, December 2020 cash reconciliation revised schedule. And item seven, January 2021 cash reconciliation revised statement. Have a motion, please.
Move.
Second. Any comments or questions going on? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item seven-B, consider approving a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. We just discussed that.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item seven-C, consider approving the minutes of the following board of education meetings, February 22nd, 2021 regular meeting, and March 15th, 2021 work session.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. We're going to, item number eight on the agenda, which are the superintendent's recommendations. There's no reason we can't take all of them. Okay, gotcha. All right, eight-A, the superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent also recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And finally, the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item nine, consider approving a resolution authorizing the sale of land adjacent to Centerville High School, currently owned by the Centerville Board of Education, to the Washington Township Board of Trustees. The parcel being considered for purchase is approximately five to six acres. I'm going to ask Dr. Henderson to expound on that, please.
Sure. The Board of Education was successful in purchasing the sixty-six acres, really directly east of where we are right now in 2017. And those acres, that tract of land was something that the Board, over the years, Boards of Education have been and were very interested in purchasing to provide some options to the district in the future. One of those things that we would really like to do is get another way in and out of Centerville High School, another build a road, for example, but that's going to take some future planning and some additional finances and things like that. But we do a lot of partnering with Washington Township, and Washington Township Station Number Forty-One, which is on Maple Avenue, it's right across the street from Stingley Elementary, is their oldest station, and they've kind of maxed that station out, and they really feel that they're in need of building a new fire station where they can accommodate larger apparatus. Anytime that you back a large vehicle in, it's never a good idea to do that, so they would like to enter into a purchase agreement with the Board of Education, like Mr. Schreier just read, to purchase some acres on the front part of Franklin Street. They're very interested in that. They feel like that would give them good access to Franklin Street to help their response times and still service the Pleasant Hill neighborhood where Station Fifty, or excuse me, Forty-One currently takes care of. So they like the opportunity to be right there on the front part of the So they like the opportunity to be right there on the front part of the property, to have easy access to the roads. Quite honestly, we like the opportunity to have safety so close to Centerville High School, and we think that it'll be a good partnership, so we're looking at working with them in the future to build a fire station there, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on item nine?
Personally, this does still allow for the road that you mentioned at a future date, though.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, this in no way will hinder, and really, there's still plenty of time to make some decisions about what the other pieces of the land will be used for, but it's not going to hinder any future planning for the school district at all.
I think I need to ask for a motion on that.
Second.
Call the rule, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number 10, consider a resolution approving the following revised Board of Education policies. Policy number 2270, religion in the curriculum. Policy number 5200, attendance. Policy number 6152, student fees, fines, and charges. Policy number 6144, investments. And finally, policy number 6424, purchase cards.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that?
Did you sign up about the purchase card?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Call the rule, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number 11, consider accepting bids through the Southwest Ohio Educational Purchasing Council and approving the purchase of two maintenance delivery box trucks from both towns in Ford, as previously discussed. One 14-foot Ford F-450 regular cab liftgate truck for $55,400. One 16-foot Ford F-450 regular cab liftgate truck for $56,000 even. There's a purchase discount of $500, making the total purchase price for both trucks at $110,900. John, I assume those are 2021s?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Can I?
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the latter?
I think when we discussed it, there's going to be some brand, I don't know if we'll be able to use without a rate.
Permanent improvement funds. Right.
And these are primarily used for food service, is that correct?
Food service and maintenance work throughout the district.
Hold the rule, Laura.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number 12, any final comments or to give any order from anyone? Okay, not hearing anything. Item 13, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G4, could I have a motion, please, that the board adjourns to executive session for the review of negotiations with employees concerning compensation? No other business will be conducted except to come out of executive session two adjournment.
Second.
Call the rule, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Mr. Schreier?
Yes, thank you all.